I'm Rick Morain. I'm representing Rotary Club here tonight, the sponsoring organization of this forum, and I want to welcome all of you here tonight. Grateful for your coming here, and we hope it proves worthwhile and educational for you. Thanks to the three city council candidates here tonight to answer your questions about themselves and their thoughts about the council. As you can see, three of the candidates are not here, and I'd like to talk about that a little bit, just to try to explain it. Three weeks ago, Tori Riley, Rotary's organizer for the club's candidate forums, emailed all six council candidates with six possible dates for this forum. The three candidates here tonight responded they would be here. Two of the other candidates, both endorsed by Jefferson Citizens for Common Sense Government, which is the group that's sponsoring three of the candidates, did not respond. Sue Beasy, the third candidate endorsed by that group, responded that her calendar for October was full and that she would therefore not attend the forum. The endorsing organization then held its own council candidate forum last week, attended by all six candidates. The three endorsed candidates said at that forum that they would not attend the Rotary Forum. Then a short time later, Sue said in a Facebook post that she felt mistreated at the Rotary Forum a couple of years ago when she was a candidate and that she would not participate in a Rotary Forum in the future. She also said that she thought that I personally moderate forums in a fair manner. She added that she didn't know for sure whether I would be moderating tonight's forum. Sue and I are neighbors. We live across the hedge from each other, and I hadn't heard from her about that question, so I went over there this morning, told her I would be moderating, and I said I hoped she would reconsider. We have chairs and nameplates for the three absent candidates in case any of them changed their mind at the last minute and decide to show up. Their absence deprives you of the opportunity to ask questions of all six candidates. But Rotary is grateful for the three that are here tonight for their willingness to go through the fire once again. I'll ask each candidate for some brief biographical remarks, and then we'll get right into your questions. If you have a question for any or all of the candidates, please write it on an index card and hand it to our question taker, that would be Jackie. I'll try to get to as many questions as possible. If some are duplicates on the same subject, I'll pick one of them or maybe reword it to capture what the basic question is for all those. And a little after eight o'clock, I'll ask each candidate to make a final statement about their candidacy. I know most of you here, and I probably don't have to say that, but we ask that you respect civility and decorum tonight. The folks sitting next to you aren't here to hear your opinions, they're here to hear these opinions. So, please, no demonstrations of approval or disapproval from y'all so we can move along as smoothly as possible. Let's get started. I think we'll just go right down the line here, starting with Luke, introduce yourself, and then Darren, and then Harry.
How much time do I have?
Oh, a short statement, biographical statement. I'll cut you off if I want to.
Okay. Well, my name is Luke Winkelman. I have lived here in Jefferson for eight years now. However, I have a longstanding family history in the Jefferson area. It felt kind of odd since I was born in Calhoun County to move back to this area, but really it ended up just being moving back home. So, I really appreciate this community. I have a small business in this community that frankly has exceeded my wildest dreams in terms of the support that I've received and can't thank the community enough. I work as a full-time critical care paramedic up in Emmitsburg, not because I have to drive that far to find a job, but because they provide me with the challenge that really makes me excited to show up to work. And it's something that I enjoy, and I've been doing emergency medical services care for, this would be my 21st year now. So, in the middle of that, I taught as an adult educator at Iowa Central, teaching the degree program for paramedics, and taught eight cohorts there, many of which had a fantastic success rate on their national boards, and that's something I'm pretty proud of. I'm an avid supporter of public service, essential services, and believe that a strong foundation of infrastructure in our community is important for its growth. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darren Jackson. I teach history and a little English at Green County High School. I've been in teaching for about 26 years, and since 2008 in the Green County area. I've served on the Jefferson City Council since 2018. I was first appointed and then won a special election and then a regular election, and this has been the thrill of my life to serve on the Jefferson City Council.
Harry Ehrenhold's here. My wife Carol and I moved to Jefferson about 24, well, 24 years ago in September. I was born and raised over in western Iowa, but immediately after graduation from Iowa State University, we moved to Colorado, and since that time, moved a lot, from Kansas or from Colorado to Nebraska to Kansas. And from Kansas, that's the move I made back here to west central Iowa, and it was for a job. I was recruited by West Central Cooperative. I am retired now, but my most recent position that I retired from there was Executive Vice President of Agronomy, led the agronomy division for that group. My whole career has been involved in the egg supply industry, and you can tell by all the places that we've had to live, I've held various management and executive positions in that area. Proud to be in Jefferson. Carol and I have three sons. They're scattered across the country. We've got four, seven grandchildren out of that group, and we've got three and one on the way, great-grandchildren. I still can't believe that one, but it's happening. Happy to be here, yes. I'm completing my third term, and I look forward to what some of the questions are out there that may refer back to something we did or didn't do right. So, thank you.
We may find out, Harry. Okay, first question. This would be for all of you. As a city council person, who or what would you rely on for information before making a decision? Let's take Darren on that and go on down and come back to Luke.
So, one of the great things in a city our size is the experts we can hire for various things. I don't think any one person can be an expert on a water plant, on animal shelters, on all of these things, but we hire good people, and then we meet in committees. We're each assigned five committees, and we meet, and we discuss things there. And so I guess some of the professional things we rely on are the professionals that are in some of those things. But of course, also, depending on the topic and the interest, we also are emailed and called from time to time with people that have special interests in the various things that we may be tasked to make a decision on.
Yes, interacting with the citizenry whenever we can. I mean, that's the very first place to get a feel for what's going on out there. As Darren mentioned, we all have committee assignments, and quite frankly, the committee assignments take probably 10 times the amount of time that the council meetings do. So, the committee meetings themselves are a great learning experience. I mean, I'm on finance and streets, water, sewer, to name two, but I can tell you that we do rely heavily upon some experts, some financial experts. We've got several of those that we have to, and we do what we can within the committee, but we realize what our limitations are there, and at that point then reach out to get some expert opinions. But the other thing that we do is, I think, make sure and keep the public informed. I know we've upgraded our website here recently, and it's probably not where it needs to be, but it's getting better. That's a great place. I'm always open to receiving emails, phone calls, texts, whatever, if anybody has a concern about anything that I'm doing on the council or what the council in general is doing. So, that's it.
So, in order to make an informed decision, I would consult any experts that I could get my hands on, as well as consulting the constituents, the people that ultimately these decisions are going to affect. I'd also want to seek out other communities that have either made the same decision for as well as against, bringing all that information together, and then view that through the lens of, is this going to help Jefferson move forward in its progress of vitality and vigor and having it be the enjoyable place it is to work and live? And if I were to step back, would I want to move there too? So, those are the lens that I would view that through after bringing all that information together.
Okay, thank you all. This is a question for everyone. Harry, we'll start with you on this one. With the water treatment supervisor position being a revolving door, why doesn't the director of Public Works carry the appropriate license? Was it not in the job description or terms of employment?
No, it wasn't. And quite frankly, our water plant operator leaving was a big surprise. We knew that we needed backup there, and we've encouraged folks to get the training and the education that they need to keep climbing up those grades, to get to the point where we've got at least two people that can fill that role. We don't have that right now, and so we are in a bit of a spot. When Kyle leaves, we will have to find coverage for that, and it does have to be a certified grade three plant operator, which we will find. We will find a way to cover it, but the suggestion from the question makes an awful lot of sense too, that we need to have more than one person certified to be the plant operator going forward.
And Luke?
It seemed like there was a couple of elements to that question. Would you mind reading it again?
With the water treatment supervisor position being a revolving door, why doesn't the director of Public Works carry the appropriate license? Was it not in the job description or terms of employment?
So, at the moment, I don't have enough information to make an informed statement on whether or not that was to be included in their job description. Certainly worth a look, and I want to look into that to see if that was something that was intended. However, I do like the idea of having redundancy, a continuity of operations planned. I understand in this situation maybe the leave is voluntary, but we have to plan for the cases where it may not be voluntary accidents happen, and we do want to ensure that we have a reliable source of drinking water, so having a secondary person to fall back on is important.
Darren?
So, these water superintendents are worth their weight in gold for many, many communities because they have to be, as Harry said, certified at a certain level. We had sort of the bad luck that we lost one and then another one, one right after the other. That's not to say that we shouldn't have two, because we certainly should, but sometimes even just getting one can be a challenge when every town that has that sort of water treatment thing is also looking. It's sort of the problem that we had for a while with police officers where we'd get them trained and then they would move on to somewhere else, and it was kind of a tough thing. But, as Jefferson has always, I believe we'll persevere, and that is a great suggestion to have too. First, we need to get one.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and Luke, we'll start with you on this one. At the last candidate's forum, I heard we were in need of a new water plant. Have we begun the study of this need or is it a need?
To my knowledge, there has been interest into that, and I believe we've begun saving funds for that purpose, and I personally believe that we need to safeguard those funds to ensure that they are there if we need them, maybe sooner rather than later because water supply is so important. It is worth looking into to ensure that we don't have to do something before the anticipated build time, which helped me, it cuts some years from now. So, it's not, it isn't planned to begin construction on that right away, but because that is so important, I want, I think it's worth looking into to make sure that we don't start building on that sooner, as well as making sure that costs don't go up the longer we wait. I believe the element of that had to do with the wastewater plant, though COVID played a strong part, strong role in that. So, if there is an advantage to begin construction on that sooner rather than later, especially in terms of saving monies, I feel there's valid, there's a valid point to look into that.
Okay, thank you. Darren?
Luke, I think the year is 2035. And so, yes, we're beginning on that trek, and you mentioned the wastewater plant. That is really kind of the definition of a success. Harry's on sewers. They started to raise rates well before that plant needed to be built so that it wasn't going to be, I realize, it was, if you looked at your bill, it was a hike, but it wasn't quite the womp that it might have been. Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania had to raise their sewer rates by 50% because they didn't incrementally do that, and that is going to be the same method we're going to do with the water treatment plant. You know, by the time that's built in 2035, it's probably going to be something else. That's just the way things wear out.
Harry?
Yes, we've had some rather comprehensive evaluations of that facility, of the water facility, by engineers, Bolton and Make and others have looked at that plant. Yeah, you're right, Darren, it's around the year 2034, 35 that we've projected that we would need to replace that plant. But what we've done in the meantime, there have been a lot of upgrades to that facility, and there will be continuing upgrades, whether it's automation, compliance issues, you name it. That plant right now is in quite good condition. It has the capacity that we need, so I think we are, what we have been focused on, and I think we'll continue to be focused on, is to get as much useful life, good useful life, and not risky useful life, out of the facility that we have, because that's where the real savings in this thing will be. And yes, there's no question that the cost of construction is probably going to increase with year after year after year, but once you put the new plant in, you've got a limited amount of time then before the next water plant replacement has to take place. So, I think in taking care of what we've got, make sure that it has all of the modern features that you can afford that are going into the new water plants, and you've got a facility that should still serve us for 10 years.
Okay, thank you. Here's the next one. The library and community center have expressed plans for expansion. Are you in favor of either of these projects, and if so, what financial responsibility would the city have? Darren, you could start that out.
So, I'm on both of those committees, Parks and Rec. I think that's what they're talking about, and the library. I'll start with the library first. So, when this first, the feasibility study was first put out there, I think I want to say we made a little bit of a mistake when we talked to the architect. We just said, "We want to expand. Give us some ideas to expand," and we didn't really put a price tag on it. And he had three or four great ideas, all $10 million. That is not going to work. It just isn't. So, then with Grow Green County, we hired a firm to find out how much this community could possibly support, and the number came up with $4 million. We have, with the library, we have hired an architect, and they are under strict knowledge that whatever they want to do, whatever the plans are, it cannot exceed $4 million. That probably means not a lot of tearing anything down. We were not ever going to tear down the Carnegie part anyway, but even the 1966 part is going to stay. So, that's moving forward. For Parks and Rec, they have a little bit more money. They have donations, they have things, and they probably can handle an $8 million project. They are also, they have hired an architect firm, and they're looking at, if you have young children that come, and one of the things that Parks and Rec has used for is a lot of youth basketball and things like that. Well, that is crowded in there when they're doing that, and so the idea is that they are going to build two more gyms just to have that better utilized there. What's the city's obligation? Well, as small is what we've decided. I'm trying to think of the exact percentage, but Scott gave us a number at first, and Sarah Moreland said, "No." And so that number is even smaller, and I believe it can't exceed, boy, I'm hesitant to say because now it'll be looked at, but I think it's 15% of anything. I don't have that number right here, but I'm using my faulty memory.
Thank you. Harry?
Yeah, both of these projects have had a lot of research done on them, several studies have been done on them already, and as Darren says, the library right now is on the latest study, which is a pared-down version. Whatever happens on either one of those, yes, they will be great additions to the city, and the city has a lot of interest in improving what we've got in a very sensible And I think this is a classic example of the opportunity that the city does have, and there's probably ways even through our, through TIF or that kind of funding to spark some investment, grants, and at the end of the day, what we have found on the projects that we have done so far, that TIF has really been an incentive to bring in multiples of what the TIF dollars are in grants. In fact, all of them we've got out there right now, whether it's all the downtown projects, the middle school project, they've leveraged that into multiples of grants for what's committed from the city on TIF. The big players in all of this are the private investors, or in the case of the library and the REC Center, it would be private donors and donations. That is by far where the most dollars have come from on these downtown city projects and on the other things that have received TIF's support. So, yes, we will definitely want to take a close look at that. I think it addresses some of the things that we've talked about, our priorities, our housing. We need to get, we would like to see more new families move to town. We'd like to have more commerce so that we can get more jobs to have those new families move to town, and once those new families move to town, we want the best for them in terms of amenities so that they stay here, they raise their kids here, they use our school system, and are successful here in the community that attracted them in the first place.
Luke, something to add?
Yes, as someone who augmented my education, very much so with the library, I feel that's an important element to our community, not just the younger generation, but as well as the older generation, having those facilities and resources available. But I do see a shift in terms of away from paper, and not necessarily completely away from paper, but introducing a lot of technology into that. So, I want to make sure that whatever funds we put into our library, which I do feel libraries are important, is future-proof. I want to make sure that the library is looking to that future, so that way we can address the technology needs of any low-income families that we have in our area, so that way they can continue to better themselves and improve things. Now, as far as the REC Center, I've actively used the REC Center, not just for its recreation purposes, but also attended many civic events there, and so I feel that is a very vibrant part of our community. But both with the library and with the REC Center, I think it's important to steward the city's finances and ensure that we're getting, one, not spending any more than we need, two, and then other, getting a good bang for our buck in those returns. I do think, you know, I appreciate that you gave the architect a budget, because having dealt with architects before, that have ignored budgets, that can get, spending can get wildly out of hand. So, it's important to steward that money well and ensure that we're not spending any more than we have to and getting a good bang for our buck in return.
Okay, thank you. Harry, you started out on tax increment financing, TIF. Here's one you can expand on. Can you explain how tax increment financing works and give me some examples of how the city has used TIF in the past? Do you think we have misused or abused our use of TIF, and why or why not?
No, and I'd answer the last question there first. Debbie Durham, who's the Executive Director of Iowa Economic Development Authority here in Iowa, she was in town, I think, two weeks ago, and I just picked up an interview that Coltrane at Raccoon Valley Radio had with her. In fact, if I'm remembering right, that's on their website, and I think it was done on the 8th, so very, very, very recently. And Debbie Durham made some comments in there about TIF, the fact that the legislature is probably going to take a look at that in this next session, but it appears to me that they're probably going to have somewhat of a limited focus. Her comments on it are that TIF has been very valuable and very useful, particularly in rural America where it's used correctly. And she singled out Jefferson as a city or a town, as one that she commended for the way that we've handled our TIF program. No, we probably aren't going to be able to get into a lot of detail about how TIF works, but I think there are some misnomers out there about TIF, and one is that if we quit utilizing TIF, our property taxes are going to go down, and we're going to have more budget from the savings that we don't spend on TIF dollars. And as I said earlier, the TIF is really an incentive to get the other new dollars. Those are where the big dollars are, the tax credits and the grants, and then the private investors. Those come back to Jefferson in two different manners. I mean, it doesn't, if we quit spending altogether on TIF, there would probably be some increase in the amount that we get for, from our property taxes, but it would not be near what we receive in way of TIF refunds. I think we have to be very diligent about how we use TIF and what we use it for, but it is designed really for infrastructure on brand-new projects. So, I'll give you some examples. Years back, the Briarwood Project and the other one out there, Spring Hill, or Spring, yeah, it's Bowers. TIF put the infrastructure in, the roadways, extended the sewers, the water, et cetera, for that. That's been quite a number of years ago. So, that was one of the early uses for TIF. Some of the more recent ones here would be, the big one, the big one has been our downtown Some of the more recent ones here would be, the big one, the big one has been our downtown. I mean, that, that is where a lot of the, the TIF dollars, but as I said, there have been an immense amount of private dollars spent down there, and I don't know if any of you've had the opportunity to, to tour the new Journey building there, the old penny store, but that sure doesn't look like the old penny store anymore. And I mean, that, that's a structure that's going to be there for a long time. And another example of use for TIF in downtown has been on our facade grants. The city has provided, in most instances, up to $150,000 in, in, in monies there by way of a forgivable loan. But that's not a giveaway. In addition, in extending those loans, we also have a contract with the building owner and operator that they will operate an active business in that building for 10 years. And they have to do that to fulfill the terms of the, of the forgivable loan. The city forgives a tenth of it every year, so if they're there for five years and decide, "Well, I'm going to sell this building," five years of that TIF money that's been extended does become due and payable then back to the city. Now, if we, if a new, if a new owner comes in, it's possible, and we haven't had that opportunity yet, but we possibly would consider then granting that money back to a new owner, the five years that are left on it, if, if they want to make improvements. But otherwise, that money comes back to the city. And as I said, there, the, the money comes back and to, and they, they aren't the same funding from the state. They are separate. What, what we get back for, for our annual budget and what comes back in TIF are measured in two different pods.
Harry, you, you mentioned Debbie Durham. You referenced Debbie Durham. She's the state director of economic development.
Yes, she's, she's the, she's the director of Iowa Economic Development Authority. Yeah, she would be the head person in the, in the economic development division down there.
Luke, anything to add to that?
Well, it's been a little bit since the question. Would you care to repeat it?
Sure. Can you explain how tax increment financing works, and give me some examples of how the city has used TIF in the past? Do you think we have misused or abused our use of TIF? Why, or why not?
Well, I think the explanation of how TIF works is a little bit outside of the scope of, say, a two-minute question. However, I did spend over an hour at the auditor's office last week, learning the ins and outs of how that works. I, I had a, a basic understanding, but they, they opened my eyes to the nuances of how TIF works. And I do think, much like a mortgage, it is a valuable tool. However, if used inappropriately, can be something that could be catastrophic in the future if we don't, if we aren't responsible with that. If we were to stop all TIF tomorrow, that wouldn't necessarily help anything, because that TIF has been borrowed against the future. That's an obligation that we must repay. We're, we're borrowing against the collateral of potential future property growth. So, if we were to do something tomorrow and never, never borrow another, or, or propose another TIF plan, we would still be obligated to pay off everything that we've borrowed to this date. And for instance, the Hy-Vee, which is one example of how, of the TIF program, that has yet to be completely repaid. We're still paying on that. However, that's been a fantastic boon to the economy of Jefferson. So, whenever you do something like that, whether it's a, imagine it from a personal perspective, whether it be a personal loan or a mortgage, things like that, you must gauge the risk versus benefit. Are we going to get benefit for this money that we're borrowing? And the city needs to do that, too, and I, I think that needs to be done on a case-by-case basis. Because, say hypothetically, I get in, it's, doesn't really do much good to look in the past and say, "This was horrible." It's important to move forward and look forward and, and, you know, make sure that we're moving in the right direction, and judge these on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. Darren?
Before I go into TIF, I realize I sort of implied that the city would be responsible for the 4 million of the library. Sorry, that's not what I meant. The city, or, the library has hired a fundraising company that is going to charge us, or charge the library board somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000, and that's what the city could quite possibly, not definitely, but could possibly do the 15%. Luke mentioned Hy-Vee as a TIF project that's been very successful, Wall Macatee, their new place, the new vet clinic, Cobblestone Inn, are other places. Luke, you also said, "If we stopped TIF today, if we stopped it today, that wouldn't necessarily change property taxes." And I do agree with that. But if we stopped TIF today, it probably would lower property taxes in 30 or 40 years, as our community dried up, and then our property taxes go down, because we won't have viable businesses and no one will want to live here. Then your property taxes will go down, because your evaluations will go down. I, you know, with property tax, I think, I wasn't pleased to see where my mortgage went either, but I want, if I was going to sell my home, for my property tax to go up.
Okay, thank you. Luke, here's one just for you.
Oh.
Luke, what has been your favorite thing or experience so far for running for the council? I think they're asking you that, because you're not an incumbent like these gentlemen.
That's a really good question. That's like asking to pick a favorite child.
Would you, would you do that for us?
Absolutely not. I know.
Want to come back to it later?
Well, it, it just came to me. It has been the outpouring of support that I've received. I have appreciated and enjoyed sitting on porches and meeting with community groups, and, and I've, I've been accepted with, with open arms as, and, and not as a politician, someone with ick or ew. They, they looked at me as an ally, a friend, and not, I mean, in, in the beginning, I thought I needed to seek out support, but the support has come to me. And granted, I, I do everything I can to, to, you know, reach out a hand when possible, but it's, this has been such a synergistic relationship, me between the community and the community with me, that, that would probably be my favorite.
Okay, good answer. And because of that, we're going to start with you for the next round, since there's a question here that's worded, "Jobs needed to be brought to Jefferson." I'm going to interpret that as, as what would you do, or what do you think the city needs to do to bring more jobs to Jefferson? And you can start that one.
As a small business owner, one of the things that I would do, if I had a business of measurable size, able to offer jobs to a community, jobs with benefits, and a career, I'd want to ensure that this business would have the infrastructure that it needed to call upon demands in terms of land, in terms of civic resources, such as water and sewer and police and first responders. I, I know, I, with all the insurance fees that I pay, something that I had very little idea until about 10 years ago was an ISO rating. And that's where my insurance agent actually looks at the fire department and says, "If this place is on fire, how quickly can they put it out?" And I did not know how much of my insurance premiums went up if the fire department wasn't quite up to muster. So, I, what I would feel, would bring in a business is ensuring that we have a strong foundation, a robust fire department, a robust water mains, and sanitation, and sewer, and garbage management, so that way it would, it could support all the needs of my booming business. So, that way then, I could provide as many jobs, good-paying jobs as possible, because with an industry coming in, economy goes up. When economy goes up, jobs come in. When jobs come in, houses are paid for, built and purchased. It's, I, I see this as a, as a catalyst, industry as a catalyst for a, a growing, robust Jefferson, one that shines amongst all the other towns around us.
Darren?
Was the question, "How do we bring jobs here?" So, I think that that goes all hand-in-hand with TIF, with the facade program, and with the Ames area group that we just joined. You know, it's easy for us just to say, "Jefferson needs more jobs." Well, then how? But those are some of the things that the current city council has been doing, some of the programs we've been working on, and some of the programs we'd like to continue working on. I don't think that we are out of control with TIF. We can spend up to $1.9 million a year, and we've never spent more than 1.2. And with that, once again, that we've talked about, you pointed out Hy-Vee and other businesses that have been brought in, and I also think that other stuff that we've been using, like for housing, then that, you know, it's hard to have a good workforce here if they have no place to live. And so, I think all of those things do go hand-in-hand.
Thank you. Harry?
Yeah, I mean, there've been some really good comments here so far, but on the, I'm, as I said, I'm on the Water, Sewer and Streets Committee, and we have, at the present time, excess capacity. We, we could grow quite a bit here, before we would even come close to reaching the capacity of particularly our new sewer plant and even our water plant. And we, we pay very close attention to that on the, on the, with the committee work, you know, the condition of the wells, et cetera. So, we've got plenty of capacity there. The Ames Regional Economic Alliance, which is the new group that GCDC just joined with, I have very, very, very high hopes for, for that group. I think one of the things that happened to, that happened to GCDC in recent years, we really got inward-looking, and it was kind of difficult to see beyond the confines of the, of the boundaries of the city of Jefferson, or in a larger picture, which GCDC covers, the county of Green. This, this group, and, and they've got 18 professionals in Ames that, that are going to help support this thing. They've got a really good track record. They've got a major project going down in Huxley. I think you've heard about the new Daisy Dairy that's going up over in, in Boone. That's like a $1.3 billion project. This, this group was, was part of making that happen. And they, they sold it to Daisy, not by trying to sell Boone, but they had like two or three sites. One was in Boone, I think maybe the other was in the Huxley area, and I forget where the other one was. But they featured all of those sites to Daisy and worked closely with them, and I think that's part of the, the collaboration that it takes to make these things happen. We've got some things going on here in Jefferson right now, and I mean, this, and I remember when we moved to Jefferson, I couldn't believe the, the new way manufacturing over in Scranton. My golly, that's a big facility. Boy, that took a lot of innovative thinking and a lot of entrepreneurial ideas to make something like that happen. And the Von Bauer, who started the plant that he sold to John Deere and then went across the road, and he's built one bigger over there, doing different things than he ever did over at the John Deere plant. So, there's, there's a lot of innovative thinking, there's a lot of spirit for entrepreneurism here in this area. We've just got to figure out how to attract a little more of it to, to Jefferson. Interestingly, I don't know if you've driven by the, the North Business Park over there, just, getting my directions wrong here, but it's close to the vet clinic out there. You see a new building going up there. That's actually going to be an incubator, a business incubator. I think that they're going to have space. It's, it's being built by an individual out of Carroll, who is operating one over in Carroll right now very successfully, and wanted, wanted to come to Jefferson, because he thinks this is a great spot for him. This gives entrepreneurs or innovators with an idea, a chance to have a space to figure out if they can make something that, that can come to fruition, can be something that's of, of commercial value, and hopefully one of those would end up being one of the new businesses that, that come to town. There is interest in, I'm, I'm aware, I am on GCDC, and, and I'm aware of, and I think it's more than just passing interest from, from a couple of firms out there right now that are looking very seriously about coming into Jefferson. Those things will be helpful, but what, what we really need are things that can tap entrepreneurial spirit and bring, bring, bring some new families to this community, and have the jobs for them to, to live and to stay here. But I'm, I'm putting a lot of hope on the, on this area group out of Ames, because I think they're going to be extremely helpful, and I think they're going to show us some things that, that we haven't seen before.
Okay. We've got about 15 minutes left, and we've got three or four questions left. We may come out about right if we keep our answers sort of short, you know? Okay, and Darren, this is for you to start. Do you think it's acceptable, considering the total city budget, that the community center, the golf course, the library, and the swimming pool all operate at a deficit?
So, the overall most expensive thing in the city government by far is the police department, and I think that's appropriate. The rest of these, yes, they do operate at a deficit, but they are not that big of the total budget. Also, I think it's good to have some of these things. Now, that doesn't mean that they are sacred cows, that we can't discuss, you know, doing different things with them. Perhaps out at the golf course, they could do, if there was a different clubhouse, that could become sort of a supper club or something like that. I would hate to think, though, of our swimming pool closing and just say, "Well, that doesn't operate out of the budget." I would hate to think that we would be a town that doesn't, suddenly doesn't have a library. We would be the only one in the county, because, well, that isn't a moneymaker. Lots of things don't make money, but they still provide services.
Harry?
Yeah, and I think all of, we, we work with the budgets every year, and the people that, that manage those various entities, we strive to have them operate those as a for-profit business. They've, they've never made money as long as I have been here. And part of the, part of the issue with that would be the, the population that we've got here. I mean, when those, when those were built in the first place, there were more people here. Our population hasn't grown that much, but that's still, they're, they're still challenged to do everything they can to operate them like a business. So, at the golf course, for example, I know he's looking for new ways to generate revenue out there. Some, some of the things will probably come to fruition, some of them probably will not. But it's an amenity that I think the city would be not as pleasant a place to live if any one of those went away. And in fact, what we're looking at now is looking for ways to increase those amenities, so that, so that our populace has, has more choices out there. I think it's acceptable, but I think it's acceptable within a range. And to say that, "Well, we know they're going to operate at a loss, and so we just accept that," no. I think that every year, when we take a look at the budgets, is there a way to improve, either on the expense savings, but I have found, from, from my days in business, that, that's a great one to look at and to work on. The biggest opportunity is figuring out how to bring in more revenue. The biggest opportunity is figuring out how to bring in more revenue, and that's, that's your big ticket there. That'll get you there quicker than, than saving for it.
Okay, thank you, Harry. Luke?
Well, I for one, I'm glad that the police department is a net loss, because can you imagine the amount of tickets I'd get to make? So anyway, but that wasn't in the scope of the question. So when it comes to these amenities, whether it be parks, or golf course, or swimming pool, things like that, there is a non-tangible benefit that is applied to those. Things that are, give us things to do, give our families things to do, things that we can appreciate about our community that don't necessarily carry a dollar that we can measure with. So it's, it's difficult to look at a budget and say, well, this, this area did not cover all of its expenses, so it's no longer worth it. We need to assess those non-tangible benefits that come along with that. However, that's not to say that we shouldn't be responsible with that. We don't need a, a resort with a VIP room at the, at the golf course. So it's, well, it really comes down to, we just need to be responsible with this. And, and if it's not being used, then why are, why do we continue to fund it? But I think a lot of these things are being used, so I think we need to do our best to gauge that subjective, non-tangible benefit and then give it whatever attention we can afford.
Okay, thank you. Harry, we'll start with you on this one. From the Iowans for Tax Relief website, Green County ranks number one from all Iowa counties in per capita spending. Do you support this? Since it's Green County, that would include all seven municipalities and the county and the school districts and all that. So it's not just the city, but the question is, do you, how do you feel, I think, about, about being number one in that category in our county?
What is, what is the context of the spending? Do you know, Rick?
I'll read it exactly.
Okay.
From Iowans for Tax Relief website, Green County ranks number one among all Iowa counties in per capita spending. I think it means government per capita spending, local government. How do you feel about that?
Well, it's, it's, it's not a place that I think any of us would want to be. I'm not, I'm not familiar with that website, but I'm, I'm assuming that they're right. It's, yeah, I guess I'm struggling to find an answer here, Rick, or to, to think of the context of, of why we would be the highest per capita spending. I, you know, that would include, that would include our county.
I wrote the question, just to make it clear, I brought a handout for you, it would make it more clear, it's kind of a difficult thing to do, but yes. As a matter of fact, on the Iowans for Tax Relief webpage, Jefferson does very well. The statistics align with the population, the cost of living, everything else. Green County statistics show that 99 counties in Iowa, Jefferson, Green County ranks number one in expenditures. I have a handout that will break it down per category, why that is and what period.
Okay, is that for the, for the, this past year? Very recent?
It's actually looking forward to 2026.
Don, do you?
Okay, that, now, some, some of that all starts to make a little bit of sense.
Don, when you say Green County, do you mean the Green County Board of Supervisors, or do you mean the spending for the entire county, the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah. I, I, I know, I know there's a lot of new roadwork, secondary roadwork going on out in the county, so looking.
It's actually 20% higher in Green County than the next closest.
Wow. Well, I, I know they, I know they've been very aggressive about, about building new roads and spending money fixing roads out there. And I think part of that was driven by all of the new windmills that went up here several years ago, and they've got opportunities now by way of TIF and other means to, to, to fund those, to, to fund the building of those roads. And that, and that, I'm just speculating here, I'm just speculating.
Yeah, Don, I'd like to have one of those too. Does either?
Well, I, I, it doesn't say per expenditure.
Don, since this, this is a, this is a county matter, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut, yeah, I'm gonna shut you off.
But I know we interact.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanted to know, we support that kind of spending?
Yeah.
I, I would, again, I think we've got to have a lot more context with that and with, with that, maybe the answer's yes and maybe it's no.
Okay, I'm gonna shut, gonna shut that down, but thank you, and I'd like to have one of your things. Luke or, or Darren, do you have any comments on that?
Well, you said Jefferson is doing all right, and so this would probably be a better question for the County Board of Supervisors, that conveniently meet at 10 o'clock in the morning on Mondays.
Luke, any comment?
I like the way Darren said it.
Okay, okay. Here's one, we got, we got a couple more, and then I'll have you each close it out. This is for everybody. To prevent another theatrical event like what was seen at the Board of Adjustment, would you support specific verbiage added to the city code for drag queen events to be allowed without prejudice and hosted within our downtown buildings? Do you understand what they're talking about with the Board of Adjustment?
Well, was the theatrics at the performance, or was it at the Board of Adjustments?
I don't know, I didn't write the question. I suspect it was at the Board of Adjustment.
So I guess I'll, you know, people dressing in drag and maybe doing things like that, I happen to be on the internet, I'll just say it this way, in 2000, New York City was doing a charity fundraiser, and to raise money for this, the mayor, Rudolph Giuliani at the time, dressed in drag. And one of the real estate moguls of New York at the time, Donald Trump came in there and gave Rudy Giuliani in his dress, rubbed his face on his chest, and then Rudy Giuliani said, "Bad boy," and slapped at him and walked away. And Donald Trump just said, "Well, I guess I tried." I don't know if that's any more or less different than what happened at the Centennial, I wasn't there.
Harry, do you have anything to add to that?
I'd, I'd rather not, but, no, I, I think the, the Board of Adjustment did, did rule that what happened there fit within, in the, in the role of theatrics. I think, Darren, you even indicated one time that you were in a play, even out at the high school, where I think, I, I think we need to be, I think we need to be careful about, I think this thing can be a slippery slope. Maybe that code does need to be revisited. It'll be interesting to see if any more action comes out of what happened at the Board of Adjustment, so there might be more forthcoming on that. But I said, just, just to automatically say that that should go away, to write a code for that to all go away, there might be a lot more other things go away that would be an unintended consequence of all that. So I think it, it is going to take more study.
Okay, thank you. And Luke?
The will of the people, of the community, really needs to weigh in on this. If they insist that the city make an adjustment to that, they need to speak up and let that be known. However, to, to put in place an ordinance that would either, you know, emphasize the promotion or the demotion of something, of an event like this, would really take a revisitation, you know, revisiting the code, not only what was going on at the time, that it was adopted, who adopted it, and, and then a full encompassing of the ordinances to ensure that things work together and speak a common, a common theme, as well as talking with the people, making sure it's their will that's, that's implemented, and then consulting with other communities that have either adopted a promotion or demotion of that, of that event, to ensure that we're actually achieving the goal that the, our constituents are hoping for. So it really takes a, a large encompassing amount of information, bringing that together, and, and again, it's not simple, and it certainly could become a slippery slope, but if that's what the people want, as a city councilman, it's a, it's a heavy burden to bear.
Okay, we came out very well. Last question, and then we'll go into the final statements. And this is a softball, because you were asked at the last forum, what are your top three priorities? Harry, you can start on that one.
Well, it's been, it's been talked about a lot here today, but I think top priority going into next year and in subsequent years, the top of that list has to be a, a close evaluation of our, of our, our local budgets, and making sure that our infrastructure, road, streets, sewer, water, that those, that those and all of our entities remain at the top of the list as far as consideration for, for modernization, for efficiency, and along with that, our employee group. We've got a, we've got a great group of employees, our public works, the police department, and they're all going to expect a raise this year, and they're probably going to all expect a raise next year, but we want to make sure that they're being compensated properly and not, not just with the, with, with the compensation and the benefits, but our recognition of their value, and incentivize them to, to find new ways to do their job by way of education, CEUs and that sort of thing. And the thing that came up earlier, you know, anybody, I would hope that anybody, we would hire our water department, even, even the grade one people, the step one, that we're talking, we're hiring the kind of folks that want to go all the way to be the top man on the job there. And I think that's, I think that's what we have to do. My number two priority would be to make sure that we onboard this Ames Regional Economic Authority, or Alliance, rather, in the best way possible, because I, I think that's one of our really good, best shots at attracting industry and attracting some new jobs to this area that, that have been escaping us up to this point in time. Those would be my top two. Economic development fits in that, that's really kind of where that goes. We've got to be, we've got to be a city that has more commerce and offers a few more services than what we're offering now, but in order to do that, we've got to attract people. So therein lies the, the issue about prioritization of housing. So housing is definitely towards the top of the list.
Okay, thanks, Harry. Luke?
My number one priority would be ensuring that the gains that we've made towards modernizing our infrastructure continue to grow forward, because it's through that foundation that we will then work on. My second priority, working on bringing in industry into our town, which I'm really excited to see the Ames Area Alliance, or Ames Regional, yes.
Economic.
Yes. So, because essentially, they're a headhunter when it comes to industry, and having had to fill jobs and having had to utilize job hiring agencies, I know what a valuable resource that is, and applying that to this has strong potential, so long as we active, we are actively involved with, with that group and ensure that our interests are addressed and, and met. So I'm excited to see the outcome of that. And then the third is to ensure that we have efficiency in, in our city government. And one of the things that, as a former department head, I have an issue with is staff turnover, because I know how much more it costs to train a new staff member than it does to retain the ones we already have. So when I see, when I see turnover, it, I'm not saying that there's a, a critical flaw, but I, I think it warrants a closer inspection. But, but to ensure that things are running efficiency, efficiently, and I know that not all budgets have fat to trim. Sometimes a, a budget smaller than necessary can hinder efficiency in some departments. So it's, it has to be done on a case-by-case basis, but I want to ensure that our city government is working well for the people that live in its community.
And Darren?
My three all go together. It's housing businesses and retaining young families here or attracting young families here, and they do all go together. Housing, I think we're doing a good job with our thriving communities designation, that allowed origin housing, more state opportunities for grants and things, and that attracted them there. You've both talked about the Ames, here, help me out, regional, right, that that will help businesses come here. And then finally, maybe the most difficult, because we are in a state that has a lot more older people than young people, but I think that we have the opportunities here, and we have great people that are here, and we have fantastic volunteers. The volunteer system is what everyone talks about with Jefferson, and that there are younger people that are maybe ready to come up and step into those positions. I know with the Force Under Forty group that they are encouraging, I'm not eligible, but I, I think those are all great things.
Okay, thank you all. We have three questions that all, that are very similar, and they feed right into your final statement. What do you think are your qualifications for the city council? And why do you want to serve?
Would you like to start?
You can start that one.
I have a dedicated life, or a dedicated career to public service, and throughout that career, I have finely honed a skill of making decisions that, that need to be made, sometimes not always pleasant, sometimes not always easy, but that need to be made. And, and I think that gives me the ability to think under pressure and weigh the pros and cons, as, as well as being a small business owner. I know the burden from, you know, both sides as, you know, paying taxes and, well, at the moment, I don't own property, I rent here in town, but it's, there's a, there's a fine balance of that, and, and I've been on both sides of the coin, but, but being able to make those decisions when necessary, but also listen to the people, because there has to be a preponderance of the available evidence to make a well-informed decision. And that's not something you want to make off the cuff, it's not something you want to mire yourself down in a giant stack of paperwork, but, but it has to be thoughtful.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Darren?
So I'd like to begin, I guess, with saying that I'm rather disappointed that the other three candidates aren't here, not as a candidate myself, but as a citizen and a voter of Jefferson. Some of the reasons they gave was that perhaps they'd be too nervous or that things were unfair. Well, let me tell you, being on city council and sitting at a table there and having, in open forum, people come up and talk and not be very happy, is not the most relaxing, nor the most fair thing that happens. Another thing that they said that they wanted to do was to get information by talking to the people. Well, this is it. This is where you go. This is the things you do, or you answer, you know, you are answering through Sean Seaborn's services, that those, that information comes out there, and then you talk to the people. Being on city council has, like I said, been one of the proudest things I've done in my life. It is not always pleasant, and it's not always just a relaxing time, but I think that I have had a lot of baptism under fire, and I think that I have the skills to continue to serve you.
Thank you, Darren. Harry?
Yeah, first of all, I, I'm extremely proud to, to be a part of the current council, and I'm, I'm really proud of what the city as a whole has been able to achieve here, particularly in. particularly in recent years. And I think one of the qualifications that I have is that I truly want to remain being an active participant in, in helping to move this city forward. Because I, I think there are big opportunities out there. I think it's, it's a great city to live in now, but there are other opportunities out there. I, I, like the other two here, also know that as, as you, you put your, put your hat in the ring, there's gonna be plenty of challenges and plenty of things out there that are going to, to come up as far as problems and issues. But my business career, that's pretty much what we did every day. And quite frankly, challenges and solving problems is, is just another, is just another opportunity, really. It's, it's, it's an opportunity to change, do things different, and make things better than what they were before. And that, that it really is something that, that I still enjoy doing. Also, exploring new ideas and new concepts. I know efficiency was mentioned a number of times here. And that is one of the things I can say with our Public Works Department, for sure, the, those folks get challenged pretty regularly when I serve on that committee. You know, are, are there, are there new and better ways to do things? Do you have the right tools to do the job efficiently? And if you don't, then we want to talk about, well, we need to, to make the current tools you've got better or work better, or we need to get something that, that is newer, more modern, and more efficient. And that goes all the way down the line, whether it's in the office or, or out in the field. But the, but the big thing is, I just, I'm interested in actively being a representative on the city council for another term.
Okay. Thank you all. I know you don't do it for the big bucks. I've, I've been covering city council a long time, and I can still remember when Paul Bartley was on the council. He asked if the, if the salary could be raised from $5 a meeting to $10 a meeting, because it was costing him more than $5 to get a babysitter for his kids. So it's, it's really a labor of love, and we, we thank you very much. Thanks for being here, and thanks for a great, a great panel tonight.